... work session meeting to order for August 22nd. We have a roll call.
District one, Mr. Depple.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bennett. Present. District three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
District four, Mr. Leavitt.
Present.
Chairman, I'll say please.
And we have a quorum present. We have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Bennett.
Our sovereign God, we're thankful to be here. We give you thanks for all our blessings. We're thankful for this commission and the role they play in this community in making decisions that affect all the people of Jackson County. So God, we pray for wisdom and discernment on their part. We pray for all elected officials and those that serve the public in other ways because we know that they sacrifice their time and their efforts for the betterment of the community and we're thankful for that. Pray that you'll be with them and their families as we go into the selection time. We pray for wisdom and discernment on behalf of the voters. We can let good men and women to represent us in all seats of government that they'll do the things that are the best for the community as a whole, not for themselves or a few people. So God, we pray for that. In all things, we know that you're in control and we're thankful for that. We're hopeful for that. God be with us and guide us all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where it be in justice forever.
The first item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the work session or meeting with little proof of the agenda prior to moving forward, but any changes before the meeting? We have motion to approve the work session agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion and a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. We have no work presentations. No one signed up to speak this afternoon, so we'll move right into our discussion items. And the first item, which is regarding the water gas water project from (inaudible). Most of that, Mr. Leavitt.
(inaudible). (inaudible). Take a work for you, but I think I might need some.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank y'all for giving us a few minutes this afternoon to talk to you about a project that we're working on. For several months now, we've been working on this project that involves a Goose Pond industrial park on Goose Pond Island. Y'all might recall many years ago, Revere copper and brass built a reduction plan out there and operated for several years and then shut down. Well, since that time, we've had a number of businesses that have acquired property out there, developed some businesses, done pretty well utilizing that area out there. I guess today they probably employ over 250 people altogether, various trucking operations and steel operations. They've tried to utilize a water line that was originally built to serve the Revere operation out there and over the years, it continues to deteriorate. Leaks are real bad. It has a couple of pretty significant outages that's really affected those guys. And they say that approximately 90 percent of the water going to that operation out there is going to the ground, leaks. They had a number of components going to old buildings or sites that are no longer in operation, so there's really no way of knowing where all the old pipes go, what all the faulty components really are. But we've been working with them to see if perhaps we could put the money together, try to replace this old water line, provide a little more reliability of service. I enlisted Ms. Kim Irvin with Morton Associates. She's been helping us the last few months to see if perhaps some state grants that we might could qualify for. She brought ADECA into visit with our businesses out there. These guys are telling us that they've even looked at shutting down their operation and moving out of Jackson County because it's a bad problem. Some of them are telling us that they could actually expand and add jobs if they had more reliable water service. And so we got ADECA up here. They've talked with these folks and I believe they're gonna be able to help us. So what we was hoping y'all could help us with, we need to be looking for some local matching funds. Approximately 70 percent of the project, it's a little bit $300,000 project is what our engineers estimate. Approximately 70 percent of it can be handled through the ADECA funds, but our local match will have to come up with it. We're hoping through the Economic Development Fund, through the NTVA, Lula money, perhaps can be a source of some funds that could help us. We hope to visit with the Jackson County Water Authority, perhaps the tobacco tax money might could be used to help us with this project, to raise our local funds. ADECA's on board. I believe Ms. Kim's got a resolution for y'all. We hope if you would consider passing. We'd like to move forward as quickly as we can. ADECA's ready for us to move forward and hopefully we can finish the engineering, bid the project and replace this old leaking line, stabilize these businesses out here and hopefully see them grow. They've made some commitments already about growth if we can take care of this problem for them.
And this is very similar, fellas, to the Oneville project that was funded last year, where we ran water out into the Oneville area to pick up new residents. This money comes from the same department, but it's a different pot of money and it's based on the creation or retainage of jobs. And we're using a combination here, retain the jobs that they have in place and then they have committed to create some new jobs. And I believe after talking to them, if we get the water resolved, they will create even more. They'll be on board to do even more. So y'all are really just the vehicle that these grant bodies would go through, just like Oneville. And where in the Oneville project, the Jackson County Water Authority had to put up a local match. So I think it's a good way to do it because we've already got a good system set up with Matthew and Anna to handle those funds.
These are good businesses that's been out there for no years, battling this problem. And I'd say we'd like to see if we can make it better for them, relieve some of the aggravation, the outages that they've had, the leaks that they've had, put a new system in along with fire hydrants, kind of stabilize their situation out there. We believe these businessmen know how to grow their business if they give them the opportunity and some of the basic infrastructure is not a big concern.
How did you come up with just eight services? Is Noble standing on his? Or who will be on this one?
Yeah.
He's gonna stand on his.
He'll stay on his.
We didn't include any of the trucking because...
You can't, no.
When Shabir Olia from ADECA came up, I wanted him to personally hear what we had heard, Roy and I, from these men, because it was so compelling, their story. And he heard the same thing. And but trucking jobs can sometimes be jobs where they contract those out. And so he felt like we would just stay with the three, Telco, B&amp;L Fabrication and Southeastern. They're all in the metal fabrication, aluminum of some sort of other. And the trucking industry, they didn't even feel like they could meet the low moderate income anyway. They couldn't qualify for retained jobs and they're having a problem finding people to drive trucks right now. So Shabir was pleased with the 77 retained and new jobs. And that may not sound like a lot, but for right now, any job is a good job and we don't want to lose any jobs. So he felt the same way. And he feels like Jim Byrd, the director of ADECA, will do that. In fact, the grant ceiling is $200,000 for this grant and they're gonna waive that amount and let us apply. And he has granted $225,000, so that's a good sign right there.
That's right. You currently lead or eat one of these businesses?
No, sir.
Master leader?
Master leader of the whole complex, yes, sir.
And who's responsible currently for the...
The leader currently is in Telco Industries now.
Kerry.
And yeah.
Kerry. We're about to maintain the...
They're responsible. They're responsible.
And they're just doing the best they can.
Yeah, they're partnering up out there.
It's awful.
It really, I'm gonna tell ya, I had, my mom's folks came, our Hodges and Kenemers, and they came from Woodville in Jackson County. And a lot of their work at Revere. And I remember when that place was booming, when I was growing up as a child. And when I went out to that industrial park, it broke my heart to see what it looks like. And according to those men, you know, it once was a beautiful place and it could again be a beautiful industrial park, but it won't without water. And we have to start somewhere. So this is the starting point.
Yeah, there's some other issues out there as well. We hope to address later if we can qualify for some funding.
If this project did go through, you would then go to metering at each business?
Yes, sir.
And city would be the maintenance?
Yes, sir.
And kill what's out there. I mean, basically, because really it's deteriorated past the point of no return and there's no fire protection. So they're gonna have a much, they're gonna pay for what they're using, save money to invest into their companies. And it just makes more sense. I mean, and I'm proud to be just a small part of the project. I was proud, Roy called me and I got to meet with those men because it seems like they've plugged away at it as long as they can and now they're just at the end of their rope.
Any other questions or comments?
How much of this funds needed is we looking for?
As stated, there's possibility some dollars have already been positive into the Industrial Development Fund. It's possible that we use that. That's not a whole lot of dollars to this point. By the time this is needed, I think we may be looking at...
Spring.
Thirty thousand dollars might be in that account. So these dollars possibly can be fully funded by the Jackson County Water Authority through the tobacco tax. But we need to be prepared, you know, if we move forward that we are willing to do this, but I believe that it could be nearly fully funded by that tobacco tax. Now, again, we do have some other water projects we're looking at too, so working with them in that sense, we may want to put a few dollars, so getting some tobacco tax on some other projects as well.
Well, and Matthew knows, as I do grant projects, I try to be realistic and not overdo it on the local side. I try to do it half and half, pro rata. You know, if you're a little low on money, I make it up in the grant and tell them that the local money all come in on the next one. And as long as you're making a good faith effort, the state's fine with that, so. But eventually, you are right, the money does have to go in, yeah.
(inaudible).
Any questions or comments? Okay, I think we do have this on the agenda immediately following, so if everybody's okay with that, we'll continue with that. Anything else to add?
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much, guys. And I know that the men out there will love to know this.
Okay, next item's regarding the creel limit. We discussed this last week or at our last work session, meeting, whether or not we wanted to do this. We want to have further discussion. If we're prepared to move tonight, we can. If not, we can do this at the next meeting. The request was to move the creel limit for about from 10 to 5 is what that committee had requested. They do have another meeting Sunday, so if you're still not sure if you can go that route, you can get some more information on Sunday. What thoughts, questions we have on this at this time? Most of the feedback I've received from this has been fairly positive as far as the need for it. And of course, all that we'll be doing is authorizing the resolution, authorizing a letter from the commission requesting the state to change that creel limit from 10 to 5 in Jackson County. It would only affect our county. Questions or comments?
I'm personally not up to speed on this. I hadn't talked to people with this effects, and so I just, I really don't, I don't know from my standpoint. Has anybody talked to the...
I've gotten some feedback myself.
I haven't.
I've gotten some feedback and it seems to be, you know, in line with this change. Have you had any discussions or I know you did a little bit more than all of that?
No, not really. I mean, I think most people that I associate with or talk to think it would be good to lower the limit because you do have like the lady discussed, which is here, you know, some people that's getting a creel limit of 10 to bring them in, then they go back out, get another creel limit of 10, bring them in.
Correct.
I mean, which you could do that with five also, but I think the whole purpose of what they're wanting to do is to limit the damage that's being done to our...
This will affect the people that are in these tournaments, these little small tournaments and all that?
This is for people that's coming down, catching them and putting them in the freezer.
It would limit the tournaments to three bass weigh-in, wouldn't it? You know, nine bass.
Well, I think the, I think some of those are already went that route. Now, the tournaments, they all have their own rules as long as it's not played by any fake rules. They all, they have to buy them. But as I look at the creel, I'm thinking mainly in terms of people that are keeping them and, you know, for consumption.
Any other thoughts or questions?
She didn't need a answer on this.
She said that they plan to take this in February when they meet with the board. If we want to, we can put this on the next meeting with the resolution we voted on if we want to move that route. And again, there is a meeting this coming Sunday at the Council on Aging Building and if you want some more information, that'd be a good place to go to gather some more of that information. So would that be the request, any places on the next meeting agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do this on, I don't know if it's the days here, do this on the 12th. And we'll get together if we can put a resolution in there. Okay, next item, resolution regarding state changes to the retirement system. There's been a lot of requests and I think Mr. Leavitt had brought up, you know, the commission taking some kind of stand on the changes and the talk going on with the state retirement, or possible changes in state retirement. And you requested maybe a resolution or something, is that correct?
Well, just to show that we support the people that have dedicated their time and efforts to the county at lower wages because of the retirement system, that we support keeping it intact the way it is instead of changing. It may not do any good, but at least the people know that we're behind them and we want to see the state not change the retirement system for these employees.
So what the request is would be to do a, put together a resolution stating that. And at the conference this last week, there's one meeting on retirement, the gentleman came and spoke about it from the retirement system, talking about the changes that have been made. And after studying that a little bit more, I think we have some facts in there we can maybe, you know, share with that to support the need to allow the retirement system kind of work through the process and the changes they've done now. Obviously, I think we're all in favor of looking at a better way to do things, but a lot of changes have been made recently and it may have a big benefit to the retirement system down the road. So is there any opposition then in putting a resolution together for that? And we'll present that at the next work session for further discussion. Get together on that as well. If you could share your thoughts.
Thank you.
Next item's regarding property insurance. Mr. Manning, have you received some information on that?
There's no citation for the Meadowbrook that basically they're stepping out of the insurance program and the state is going to have a fund similar to the workers' comp fund for all of our property insurance. And in talking just recent, I just got a little information within the past couple of weeks, but speaking with them, it's going to be like a self-funding type program through the agency. Again, very similar to what we see with our workers' comp fund now. And it should, according to the gentleman I talked to, it should give us better rates than what we're getting now. Again, it's all in the works currently.
And the state is taking advantage?
Well, it's through a, it's through a fund through the ACCA, similar to the workers' comp fund. Basically, it'll be ran and handled the same, very similar to the way that fund is handled.
Says property and crime charges, so they're gonna provide general liability also under this policy?
Yeah, and Meadowbrook, as I understand, is, who we've always dealt with, they're gonna be the administrator for them. So it's, the same company that's been handling it for all these years will be the administrator for the fund. That's their liability side.
The liability side. The workman's comp and liability that we have now, pretty strong programs with ACCA. And they, again, some of the benefits and things that have gone on with that, so I think it's a very strong program to be a part of. What we need to do if we want to move forward with this is take a look at what we have now, compare that, and are they still getting that information together for us?
Yeah, I haven't even got the packet yet.
Okay, so once we receive that, I guess the best thing, we'll try to email something out, kind of sharing what we have now compared to what they're looking at. And then as the budget being upcoming, if we can discuss further depth, how we want to do this. Just wanted to give everybody a heads up that this is, so it's being done and something we need to be looking at.
They say a decision needs to be made as soon as possible. How much time are we looking at?
I think they're wanting to start it October 1st. Is that what?
For our county, most likely it'll be January.
Yeah, but what they're doing is looking at which the counties, what their current policies, when they end, and trying to pick them up at the time that the current ones end. As you imagine, each, probably each county has a different ending date.
When is ours currently?
Ours is like December the, like December the 1st. So ours will actually, the one we're under now, we're on through December 1st.
Okay, so that's when we'll, but we'll have that information hopefully soon. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, next item is regarding some appropriations. We've had a request from Little Public Library, the Jackson County Conservation District and Skyline Food Pantry.
Couple of mountains.
And the total amount of $2,150. And I think Mr. Leavitt and Mr. Miller were gonna separate this out of their funds, is that correct? Split these?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, so any questions or comments on that? Is that all of you?
Did you get this one?
Yeah, the Library, Conservation District and the Skyline, or a couple of mountain food pantries. So if there's no opposition on that, then we'll place that on the agenda immediately following also. Okay, next item's the board appointments. We have, as announced, several board appointments that have opened. We have a copy of all the positions and the folks that have applied thus far. I would like to ask that we also put this on the agenda for September 12th to vote on. I wanted to ensure that all the folks that are currently serving are aware that their terms are up and then we'll be able to make those appointments on the 2nd, or 12th of September. Another note on this, there's several of these folks, there are several positions. You see there are a few boards that have not had anybody apply for them. The Personnel Board, we still need some applicants for that. And a couple, Mountain Lakes Tourism Association Board. So we'll keep those open until we've had an application served on those. And I encourage we place this online on our Facebook page and other things, so if you know of anybody that's interested, please get their attention for this, so that they might choose to serve. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, and we'll move on into our meeting and before we proceed with the minutes, actually we'll do the minutes first and then the agenda. So moving on into the meeting, we have several sets of minutes. I would ask that we leave out the July 18th set of minutes. There is a question on the motions, motion to adjourn. We need to clarify that before that gets approved. But as far as the 25th, August 1st and August 8th, we can prove them separately or together. So I'm really ready to proceed.
How much motion approved, all except for July 1st?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
(inaudible).
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposing? Okay, have no old business, so we'll move, before we do that, again, approve the agenda. We have the four items that were listed along with the appropriation request as item number five. Are there any other changes before we proceed? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? The agenda is presented.
Like a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposing, no. Okay. Move on to the first item and that is the motion to approve and sign a resolution regarding the Goose Pond Water Project as presented in the work session just a moment ago. Any other questions or comments on that before we proceed? Have a motion to approve that resolution? Motion, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposing, no. Okay, next item, motion to adopt the hiring review board recommendation for the vacant HMP-1 position for the Public Works Department. Mr. Campbell, we'll get on that.
Thank you, Chairman. Gentlemen, in your packets, please find three letters for the days of eight. The first letter is a transfer request for one of the HMP-1 vacancies that exist at Public Works. The second letter would be the previous recommendation for that other HMP-1 vacancy. And then the final letter will be the four temporary positions that are currently coming to a close. Some of those vacancies were created by employees moving up to permanent positions as well as the one extension that's noted. And then if approved, I'll be coming forward in the future requesting to fill the one in our vacancy for temporary.
So we have two, two one positions and then the temporary, correct?
Yes, sir.
Both of those one positions are ones that were vacated. On the four temporary positions, how many of these are an extension for a new, or starts a new six-month period?
The first, the first name you see there is the current temporary employee that would be extended for six months. The other three would be a restart essentially, new employees, new six months term.
And they've been with us for how long?
The three below, that would be new hires.
Okay, that's your friend. Okay, any questions, other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a list of three recommendations regarding this. We have any changes or any questions? We can approve these separately or all together? And would we like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve again.
I have a motion to approve all those recommendations. We have a second. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Next item, motion to approve, adopt the hiring review board recommendation for the vacant driver collector position for the Sanitation Department. You have a recommendation from Mr. Robinson. You have anything to state on that?
This position up here was had open for a month or so and this person here is a second to interview. He's on real well above time and if y'all would consider, I'd like to transfer him into this position. And I'd like to make note if we could, that if something must have happened, that he decided not to take it or something come up, that maybe we could pull from the applicants that we had this last interview for maybe up to three months.
If that were to happen, we could approve that, that it came up. Okay, so... Okay, so any questions or comments on this recommendation? If we do this, this will create a vacated position in the public works department, which we'll need to go back through the process. So if we do that, I'd request some leniency in moving forward in that process. In other words, if we are able to choose from this last pool of applicants that was interviewed, that we go ahead and do that as opposed to going back through the process again. Is that suitable for everybody?
How many did you interview?
I'm talking about for the public work position. This will open a public work position.
Oh, because of the transfer?
Right. How many did we interview?
Do you have a suitable pool of applicants to back through this solution?
Possibly. Yeah. I have some thoughts on that that I can share.
We can...it doesn't have to be done that way just to give us the ability to do that, if that's what the question is, if however we want to go forward. We good with that? Okay. Do we want...any other questions or comments on this? All right. So do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
Make a motion.
Motion, a second?
Make a second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, next item, motion to adopt the hiring and review board recommendation for the vacant park maintenance position. Mr. Barnes, we had a temporary?
Temporary, yes. This is my third, I don't know, third time char.
The others did not accept, correct?
One didn't accept, and one didn't accept.
Okay. So any questions or comments on that? Does it fill a vacant temporary position? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. The final item is appropriations, as discussed. Those three items, Woodville Public Library, Jackson County Conservation District, and the Summer Mountain Food Pantry, the total of $2,150 could be split between Mr. Millers and Mr. Lethal's company, and they're double signed. Any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve this appropriation or these appropriations?
Make the motion.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. That concludes the items on our agenda. So we'll move on to our reports. Anything, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Barnes?
Well, yeah, I have some construction I've got, a couple of footings, wood, and a lot of trees.
There's a meeting tomorrow morning, is that correct?
Wednesday.
When, Tuesday morning?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard.
For the construction review?
It's on Wednesday or Tuesday.
Okay, it may be Wednesday.
Is this the onsite meeting in a month?
Yes, yes. That's tomorrow morning. Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, Kathy told me it's tomorrow, 9:00.
That's just a construction meeting, if anyone wants to attend, but it's just to go over what's been done so far, you know, follow up with the project. That meeting primarily for the architect with the contractor.
I don't know if...
Blatt?
Blatt can answer the question, but you know, we're going to put Gags out there.
We're raising, we could coordinate with you.
We can ask that.
Some one here, that's okay.
Mr. Campbell?
County Road 213, Mount Creek Bridge, approximately half of the bridge is demolished now, and the southern approach is stabilized. It's coming along. And County Road 200, female work that we're underway. The deconstruction base is complete, and we're starting to move forward with reconstruction now.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. Porter?
I don't hear anything.
Mr. Manning? We are going to plan to have a budget meeting, if possible, next Thursday, and we'll get something scheduled. Miss Kathy will get with everybody, see what day works best next week. That'll make it to go over the full budget, as much as we've got input, and then any other information that we have. And we'll get that scheduled for next week, and we'll get that posted and advertised. And I think that's all from that. Do you have anything, Mr. Vinn?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No, sir.
Mr. Guthrie?
No, sir.
Okay. That concludes our items for this week. We do not have a meeting next Monday as it is a Fifth Monday. So and the following week is Labor Day, so that meeting will be on the 6th. Would that will overturn the motion to...
Make a motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no.